Good morning, everyone. Sorry for a little bit late start. We are here, it's Tuesday, March 12th, 9:00 AM. Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, Conference Room 325. And the first bill on our agenda this morning is Senate Bill 2768 relating to greenhouse gas emissions. So this is a clean fuel standard bill, a little bit similar to what we considered with the House version. And first up to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, no members of the committee. Monique Schaefer, Decarbonization Program Manager for the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Our comments do provide some in-line edits that we recommend for this bill. In summary, they sort of expand the definition of alternative fuels. And then they also allow for a little bit more flexibility in rulemaking. I am available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have, let's see, Neste in support?
Yes, Madam Chair, Christina Cornejo in Neste. And we stand on our written comments as submitted, in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Alliance for Automotive Innovation in support. Not present. The Pacific Biodiesel Technologies, also on Zoom, not present. Hawaiian Electric on Zoom. Someone there from Hawaiian--
Can you hear me okay? Okay, so Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Nicholas O'Hayesley, and I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. So the company supports the clean fuel standard. However, we're concerned a little bit because it doesn't seem like the fuel used for power generation is included. So kind of similar to the State Energy Office, we have some recommended in-line edits, just to make sure that we're included. And our concern there is that our customer bills could go up if we're not included in this. And I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. That is everyone we had signed up to testify in person. Anyone else? Please, Henry Curtis.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Henry Curtis with Life of Land. I did submit testimony on this. We think it's ironic that this is called the Clean Fuel Standard, sort of like clean coal. Clean fuel, fossil fuels are not clean, period. We don't support the bill as it's written. We prefer to ban the use of fossil fuel vehicles, or set a date for that to occur. And after that, we can talk about what we do with the fuel until then. But we think setting a date that we phase out all fossil fuel vehicles comes first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We had additional testimony, written testimony submitted from the Climate Commission in support, from Par Hawaii with comments, 350 Hawaii with comments, from-- On this measure. All right, if not, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda. Senate Bill 2505 relating to the Public Utilities Commission. This establishes system resilience as a metric that is monitored and considered by the PUC. Allows the Hawaii electricity reliability surcharge to be transferred to the commission. Again, similar to a bill we heard on the House side. And first up to testify, we have the Consumer Advocate.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michelangelo. I'm the Executive Director of the Division of Consumer Advocacy, which is part of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments, available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we have the Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Grace Ralph with the Public Utilities Commission. We will stand on our written testimony in support of this measure and are happy to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaiian Electric on Zoom with comments. Oh, present. Hi.
Hi, morning Chair Low and Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee. Greg Shumelkov for Hawaiian Electric. I will stand on our written testimony. We appreciate the amendments retained in S D two, available for questions. Thank you.
And then that's, we have a written testimony from Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in support. Was there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? All right. If not, next up, we have Senate Bill 3010 relating to renewable energy. This requires the Department, this requires CEBET to direct the Energy Office and work with utility companies and other renewable energy developers on all applicable planning, leasing, and permitting processes to expedite development of renewable energy resources. And first up to testify is the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Maria Tome with the Hawaii State Energy Office. We will stand on our written testimony with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Public Utilities Commission?
Good morning again Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Grace Ralph with the PUC. We will stand on our written testimony with comments and offer answers if you need them.
We have additional written testimony from Hawaii Gas, 350 Hawaii, and one individual. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions?
I just have a quick question for the State Energy Office. So I'm looking at your testimony, and I just wanted to clarify that the language in bold is a language that you consider to be unnecessary.
Oh, no, this is, the language in bold is actually already in the statute.
Uh, so what is it that, so you just think that the language on the section on page two, lines nine through 13 is unnecessary?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. Follow-up, I guess. So where is this bill? Sorry, our testimony is not-- Um, sorry, Maria. Don't go away. So we're basically saying that subsection three on page two is like not necessary. It's just redundant with other language.
Yes.
And then the other changes-- What, the other changes in this bill, I guess the main change would be adding the word leasing. Does that--
Yes, that's fine. And up in the title.
Yeah, yeah. What is the title? Does the title change much? Because I think supporting energy projects is already mentioned.
Yeah.
Statute?
Yeah. It's just broader than just supporting renewable portfolio standard.
Yes, but I think in the--
So we don't object.
Enabling statute of the Energy Office--
Right.
Already mentioned supporting energy project.
Yes, it is broad.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all. Any other questions? All right, we will move on to House Bill, or Senate Bill 2575 relating to the environment. This prohibits seabed mining under certain conditions. First up to testify on this, we have OHA, oh wait, let me see who's in person. We have Greenpeace Hawaii, Dave Mullenix on Zoom.
Aloha. Thank you for hearing this legislation. This is very important legislation. Seabed mining, we don't know what's down there. And many states like California have already banned seabed mining. I just quickly remember Glen Canyon Dam back in the old days. And the Sierra Club was asked to, they were going to put, they were actually going to put a dam across the Grand Canyon. And they said, well, and all environmental groups stood up and said, no, 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 you can't do that. And they said, we're going to put up a dam somewhere. And so they let them, they didn't fight them, and they put it in Glen Canyon. Afterwards, they found that Glen Canyon had incredible historical records of indigenous housing and old ruins, a whole culture that no one knew about. And it was, it was a shock to them when they discovered this is a complete historical record was going to be destroyed when it filled up with all the water. And that's because they just didn't know it was there. And the same thing's happened in seabed mining. We don't know the valuable things that are happening on the bottom of our seabed. And this is very destructive to the bottom of the ocean. We don't know what we're going to lose when they go down there to do that. And it's very important that we oppose it. So thank you, I mean, your support, you know, support this bill, but oppose seabed mining. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And then we had Brittany Kumai in support on Zoom.
Not present.
Not present. Okay, we had additional testimony submitted from OHA in support, Department of Health in support, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, another coalition of national and local organizations in support, Benioff Ocean Science Laboratory in support, 350 Hawaii in support, Intemperate Earth in support, Kua Aina Ulu Awmo Awmo in support, Kua, Sierra Club in support, Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support, For the Fishes in support, Nature Conservancy in support, Hawaii Thousand Friends in support, and Americans for Democratic Action in support, and Fair Wind Cruises in support. And then we have, I think, 11 additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the last bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 3195 relating to renewable energy. So this is similar to House Bill 2020 that we heard last time around. This is the not to be confused with wheeling bill. That amends definition of renewable energy producer. And first up to testify, we have DLNR on Zoom.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Luke Sarvis for the Department of Natural Resources. The department stands on its written testimony and support, and will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning again. We will stand on our written testimony in support and be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members. Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office. We will stand on our written testimony in support and also direct the committee's attention to our suggested amendment to Section 1 to explain this a little better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have multiple people signed up for DLNR, so also Russell Suji and Chair Chang. I'm not sure if there was someone else from DLNR that wanted to testify.
No, those were backups in case. There's a couple hearings going at the same time.
Got it. So then we have Life of the Land with comments.
Aloha Chair Low and Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. Henry Curtis, Life of the Land. Huho Nua Bioenergy proposed turning trees into electricity and hydrogen. As far as we can tell, this bill would allow a similar operation on DLNR land. There is a proposal that you have a 65-year lease, which no renewable energy company has a power purchase agreement for that length. And while the PUC has restrictions, they impose life-cycle greenhouse gas restrictions on renewable energy projects. This bill has no reference to a renewable energy project having to cut greenhouse gas emissions. We propose an amendment that qualifying renewable energy projects must cut life-cycle greenhouse gas emissions per unit of energy produced by at least 75%. Mahalo.
Thank you. Then we have KIUC on Zoom.
Not present.
Hawaiian Electric.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is James Abraham. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric, offering comments in a proposed amendment to Senate Bill 3195 S D two. We do have concerns with this bill as currently drafted and whether it would enable wheeling of electricity in Hawaii, which we believe comes with serious equity issues that would need to be resolved. However, it is our understanding that wheeling is not the ultimate purpose of this bill. Accordingly, we've been in discussions with stakeholders and offer a clarifying amendment to confirm that this definitional change would not allow wheeling to take place on leased state land without prior approval from the PUC and the entity owning the infrastructure. With that, I'm available for questions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And then we have Greenpeace Hawaii, Dave Mullenix on Zoom.
Good morning. Thank you for, I think, for hearing me yesterday. We stand in strong opposition to this legislation. Getting it at a public auction is really bad, I said it's a bad precedent. And also, I think Henry Curtis' testimony sums it up quite well, so I'm going to just leave it there. Please listen what Henry just said, and listen, look at our testimony. This is a very bad policy, a very bad idea. I strongly oppose it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have additional written testimony from three fifty Hawaii, Hawaii Gas in support, and Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in opposition. Anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? I have a quick question, I guess, Henry. I feel like there's some misunderstanding, because this bill, right now, under state law, this, this process for leasing, there's like a certain process for the types of projects listed. And one of them includes renewable energy producers. But renewable energy producers is defined as a producer that sells electricity to the utility. So it's not open for a project that wants to produce renewable energy for other purposes. But your example of Huho Nua doesn't really apply, because Huho Nua would want to sell electricity to the utility and would already be sort of allowed under this existing statute. So this is really, I think, in some ways, kind of a housekeeping measure to clean up the definition of renewable energy producer, so that it's not specifically tied to a project that has to sell electricity to the utility.
Life Land would disagree with that assessment, because Huho Nua, while they were, wanted to produce both electricity and hydrogen, this bill would allow a third, a renewable energy company to just produce hydrogen. And there is nothing in the bill that suggests that the hydrogen production should decrease greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, the greenhouse gas emissions could skyrocket under the proposed bill. In addition.
There would be other, there would be, I guess, I guess the question, there would be other, there's other processes in place that remain in place to look at permitting those projects. But this, this, that kind of requirement's not applied to any of the other things that already can lease state land under this section. It's not, it's, so, I see what you're saying, but it's not meant to be that lever, like at that, that part of statute.
But at the P U C, also, there are contested case proceedings, and this bill says direct lease, which means there's not a contested case proceeding. So it cuts down on the ability of climate activists to be concerned about potential. We're not saying it will, but the fact that D L N R will not identify what entity has come before them means that we have to speculate that it's something bad.
Okay, all right, thanks. I guess D L N R?
Yes.
Do you have a specific project requesting to lease land that sort of brought up the need for the language in this bill?
We do, yes. And this discussion happened, it might have been on the Senate side, where we did, did explain. So this is a project that we've been working on, on the, called the Feedlot Parcell, sitting in Campbell Industrial. And so the company is called Eurosynergy America. It's a subsidiary of Toyota. And the project is to use recycled water and through electrolysis, produce hydrogen. The power for that would come from, would come from solar panels that would be installed on the parcel also. So there's, there's no tie-in with Huho Nua, with biochar, anything like that. This is strictly a hydrogen production by a renewable resources project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see, who else can I ask? Maybe Energy? Oh, go ahead, yes.
Just a follow-up clarifying question for you. So this is a for-profit company, and it is one company for which this legislation is written?
No, it's not written specifically for that company. It's written to modernize our statute. We've actually had a couple of projects. This is the, probably the third one, intended for this parcel over the years. And the issues in the past have been that, in part, because of the auction process and the lack of, lack of surety, that companies aren't willing to go through. And so right now, right now, if you're trying to do anything aside from a solar project to sell electricity eco, basically, you can't do it on state line without going through the auction process. And so all this does is open up our definition to diverse, diversify the actual renewable energy projects that we can directly lease to.
Thank you.
Does that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, really quick, Henry, really quickly. Sorry, remind me, I'm, can't page through my testimony right now, and I can't pull it up online. But what you suggested, putting a requirement that the energy produced be seventy-five percent, was that your testimony?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And solar to hydrogen would probably fit that very effectively.
Okay. That was my next question for the, I see, Energy Office, I see you nodding, but if you want to come forward on the, I have a question for you. Or Maria, yes. Would the, would seventy-five percent, if we added that in as a requirement, seventy-five percent below, greenhouse gas emissions below fossil fuel be a reasonable level?
If it's clear what the baseline is, that would be very helpful. I would just say that, because seventy-five less than.
What would you suggest?
Seventy-five percent less than what? I mean, yeah, because what is, what's, what it's being compared to?
Which type of fossil fuel?
Yeah, or what, yeah, how the, how that is determined.
Well, what would you suggest? We have language saying below fossil fuel at other parts of statute. You guys seem to figure it out.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? All right. Oh, please come forward. Would you like to add anything?
So our renewable fuels production tax credit, we asked that amended language be the fossil fuel in which it's most likely to replace. That gives us a little bit more.
The fossil fuel it's most, it's most likely to replace?
Yeah.
Okay, that works. Thank you. Any other questions, members? All right, if not, we will recess for decision-making.
All right, we are back and decision making on the 9:00 AM agenda for Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection. First on the agenda, we have Senate Bill 2768. This is the Clean Fuel Standard Bill. For this, we're going to basically match it up to the House position. So this is adding the, you know, putting all the language in from HB 2297, House Draft One, and we'll make sure the date is defected to the year 2000, uh, 3000. With that, members, questions? All right, if not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 2768, Chair elects to pass with amendments. Both Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes. Representative Gates is excused. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Perusso.
Aye.
Representative Woodson is excused, and also Representative Ward. And Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. SB 2505, this is adding resilience to the PUC statute. So this is already almost identical to House Bill 2770, House Draft One. We're going to just match it up to that, which is adding the word resilience in a couple more places. Some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and make sure the date is defected to the year 3000. With that, members, any questions? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 2505, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Both Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Seeing the excused absences of Gates, Woodson, and Ward, any reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have Senate Bill 3010 relating to renewable energy. This is an administration bill, just clarifying. Oh, wait, this is not, wrong bill. This is relating to renewable energy, and this is just directing DEBAT to direct the Energy Office to facilitate energy projects. So we're going to move this forward. We're going to remove subsection three on page two altogether, defect date to the year 3000, and just continue, have further, move this forward for further discussion. Members, any questions? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 3010, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes. Excused are Gates, Woodson, and Ward. At this time, members, any no's or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. And Senate Bill 2575, relating, this is the Seabed Mining Bill relating to the environment. On this, we're just going to defect the date to the year 3000 and move it forward. Members, any questions? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 2575, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Both Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes. Excused are Woodson, Ward, and Gates. At this time, members, any no's or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. And then Senate Bill 3195, Senate Draft Two. This is the one we just had some discussion about on the land lease issue. So some changes to this. For section one, we're going to take Hawaii State Energy Office amendment suggested in testimony. For subsection three on page five, we'll take deal in ours, suggested changes. And then we'll add language to the end of section two that says, provided nothing in this section shall allow wheeling that's not otherwise authorized in statute rule or approved by the PUC. And then we're also going to add a provision, I have to figure out the appropriate place for it, just that for projects to be approved under this change, they would have to be 75%, have a greenhouse gas emission 75% below that of fossil fuel, the fossil fuel of the fuel that, that, and that is most likely to replace, whatever that language was. We'll have additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and affect the date to the year 3000. Members, any discussion? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 3195, recommendation is to pass with amendments. And Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes. Excused are Gates, Woodson, and Ward. At this time, members, any no's or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.
All right, good morning. We are here with the Joint Committees on Energy and Environmental Protection and Transportation. It is Tuesday, March 12th, 10:00 a.m. in room 325. We have one bill on the agenda today, Senate Bill 3021 relating to transportation. This renames the electric bicycle and electric moped rebate program to the electric mobility rebate program, expands eligibility and rebate amounts. And first up to testify, we have Hawaii State Energy Office.
Good morning. Chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee, Nicole Chernahorsky on behalf of the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And Department of Transportation?
Hello, chairs, vice chairs, members. Ed Sniffin with HOI DOT standing on our very late testimony in support.
Thank you. Ulupono Initiative?
Good morning, Chair Lo and Chair Todd, members of the committees. Micah Munikata here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We like to stand in our testimony in strong support of this bill. We do want to know, we do have a recommended amendment just for consideration of the committees to consider a point-of-sale rebate. We do think that that can be a barrier for some of these folks putting the upfront costs to purchase one of these e-mobility devices. So just for consideration of the committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Blue Planet Foundation? Not present. We have additional written testimony from the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Climate Commission, Hawaii Apple Seed, Hawaii Bicycling League, all in support, and seven additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? Rep Onishi?
Yeah, for DOT. So, do you have any data on the use of this rebate program or subsidy program?
So far, we put forth about $700,000 towards subsidies. And so far, we've gotten responses or requests for about $100,000. So it's not as robust as we had hoped it would be, but there's still a lot of people asking for the service to move forward. As Mike had talked about, for some, that lack of point-of-purchase is a barrier. They don't have the funding to push forth to get reimbursed in the future. So we're trying to see what we can do to adjust and further incentivize people to purchase electric vehicles.
So the fund allocation or the amount set aside for this rebate program is $2 million, correct?
That's correct.
So out of the $2 million, about 850,000 is being utilized?
No. So initially, when the bill was previously passed, it created a fund, but there wasn't a mechanism for us to access the fund. But we thought it was a really good program, so we moved it forward with our operational funds from the DOT side. The intent was for it to be $700,000 per year for the term of that bill. So we put forth $700,000 for our operational funds to be available for reimbursement for this program. Of the $700,000 we pushed forth, about $100,000 has been accessed so far for subsidies.
Okay, so we're talking 150 units-
About there, yeah.
-per year?
About there, yes.
And you have another 100 units that are awaiting funding. Is that correct?
I think so. We have the funding to cover the units that are available now. What we're trying to do with this bill was ensure that we could push this program forward in perpetuity. Pushing forward on our operational funds is just not sustainable. So we wanted to make sure that there was a fund specifically for the reimbursements or for subsidies of these types of vehicles.
I just, I'm just trying to gauge demand, right? So at $500, how much of the general costs have you guys seen is covered by that $500?
So the way we patterned our subsidies was after how the bill was passed previously. So of the $500, we would cover up to half of it, or 250. I can't remember the total amount, Micah. But what we saw is, when we pushed this forth, the restrictions that we had put on it initially, must be 18, must be a student, must be in a subsidy program itself, and must not have a vehicle, was quite a barrier to a lot of people who would otherwise have accessed the program. So we're trying to see how we could adjust the program to ensure that more people can access it, more people can use micro mobility in these areas. So to answer your question, very difficult for me to gauge the demand with all the adjustments in the program.
So why are we increasing the amount of the subsidy then?
Because I think, once we adjust those criteria, there'll be significant demand for it. So from my perspective, having that funding available, especially out of the special fund, would make it easier for us to subsidize more electric vehicles.
I mean, that makes sense, right? But, so the bill calls for $2 million a year, right? You're gonna tweak the requirements, but by throwing in 750, you also throw in another different parameter, right? That changes the demand issue.
Yes.
So why not just leave it at 500, tweak the program to make it more accessible, and increase the amount of money you have available? Then we can get a better gauge as to what the actual demand is.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, for me, making sure that we have sufficient funding for the demands that are out there, I'm fine with that approach. Just making sure that we tweak the criteria to ensure that we can increase the demand.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that makes sense, right? If you guys see that as the barrier to additional people wanting to get access, then that makes sense, right? And us increasing the funding available-
Yep.
-so that you can put out more subsidies or stipends, whatever-
Totally agree.
-makes sense. But I didn't see the reason for increasing the amount of the subsidy.
I think-
And one portion of that actually goes to the cost. Because if I read the bill correctly, it's 750 or the total cost of the-
Yes.
-whatever they're buying, right?
Yes.
So that tweaks it again-
Yeah.
-right? Because if it's free to somebody, they might just buy it just to buy it, right?
I agree, yeah. I'd say, there's several things that push the need for this bill from our perspective from the beginning. One of it was making sure we could tweak the criteria to get more people involved in the program. The second was, I was going to ask you guys to put in general funds for this, because we've been using operational funds all this time. Given where we are, I'm not gonna be asking for that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
But that was what pushed the discussion from the beginning on this bill. We've dropped those pieces, and we just wanted to make sure we tweaked the criteria and make sure that we have operational funds available to fund, hopefully, an increase in demand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, members? If not, should we go straight to decision-making? Are you guys ready? Okay. Great. All right, we are voting on Senate Bill 3021, Senate Draft Two. We're gonna move this forward with some changes. We're just gonna blank out all the dollar amounts for the subsidy and the total amount, just for further discussion. We'll add electric cargo bikes, as suggested in the testimony from the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and affect the date to the year 3000. Members, any discussion? If not, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 3021, SD Two. Chair recommendation is to pass with amendments. And Vice Chair, Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes. And Rep Gates is excused. Rep Kahaloa, aye. And Representative Perusso, aye. And Rep Woodson is excused, and also Rep Ward. And Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Transportation?
Yeah, same recommendation on ours. Just noting that subsidy has been blanked, so we can talk it over.
Yeah, Chair, again, I don't see why we would want to change the subsidy amount. I think $500 is realistic. So I'm gonna be voting with reservations, because I think it should still be 500.
I got you.
Thank you.
Rep Ebslin, are you requesting a ruling on the question?
No, not.
You already got the rebate, it's too late.
I am not requesting a ruling on a potential conflict, because I've already been a recipient of the $500 rebate that it currently exists. And just to shout out to the program, it's a pretty amazing program. Since I don't have another registered vehicle in my name, I was able to get it. I got a $500 check in the mail. It allows me to have transportation options on Oahu. And I just want to note that I support increasing the full rebate amount, because not only does this get cars off the roads, not only does it reduce carbon emissions, but it's an equity issue as well, with the cost of car ownership, with the cost of car insurance. Car ownership has been pushed out of the formal realm for many people, and this allows access to transportation to and from work for many people. So I support increasing the full amount, hopefully, when this thing moves through conference. Thank you.
Rep Onishi?
Sure. No, no. Sorry, I have a follow-up. I forgot to ask this. I meant to ask this during the questioning. But, you know, I walk around the Capitol area, and what I have seen is there are more electric bikes on the sidewalks, and you can't hear them coming up behind you until they pass you. And they're like whizzing by at 20 miles an hour. So, you know, because there's a lack of enforcement, you know, and between Baritania and King Street, there's a bike path that goes right through the Capitol area from the municipal building, and people are still using the sidewalks. So with that, I do have concerns about that increase without enforcement.
I got you. Yeah, and I think it's something we're gonna have to address down the road, for sure. I know there were a couple of bills this year looking at issues around that, now that they're starting to become more popular. Probably next session we'll have to figure something out.
Voting on SB 3021, SD Two, the Transportation Committee following the recommendation of the Chair of EEP. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Yu-
Aye.
Representative Ebslin-
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa-
Aye.
Representative Miyake-
Aye.
Representative Onishi-
Resubvention.
Representative Matumono-
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, and we are adjourned.